All right, we'll call the City Council regular meeting agenda for Monday, June the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at six thirty-three P. M. If you'll all stand, you'll join us in a prayer led by Councilmember Cade, followed by the pledges by Councilmember Patel. All right, thank you for that, and thank you for coming out tonight and being a part of our City Council meeting. This is your City Council, your City Council at work tonight in your chamber, so welcome. With that, we'll move to roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I certify that we have a quorum present, as all members of the City Council are present and accounted for. Moving forward in the agenda, citizens' comments. I believe we have several that have signed up. We have three under general, just general comments. They will be, there's nothing on the agenda that they're speaking to, so we'll give them, we'll call your name. You'll go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll, or just your name for the record, excuse me, and you'll have three minutes to speak. There will be a clock on both, both walls, so you can keep up with that. The others that have signed up to speak have signed up to speak on a specific agenda item, and we will call your name once we get to those items. With that, Mayor Protim, if you'll go with the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lauren Sweeney, if you'd like to make your way to the podium. And as the mayor said, if you'll state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and I will point out, because these are not specific agenda items, we cannot dialogue with the public comment speakers at this point, so just go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, my name is Lauren Sweeney. I'm a Pearland resident and have been for the past six years. I live here with my husband and children. Good evening, council members. I am here as a mother, one who cares greatly about the suffering of children here and abroad, and I believe that silence in the face of mass suffering is not neutrality but complicity. What is happening in Gaza is not simply tragic, it is catastrophic. We don't have an accurate death toll, because the infrastructure is gone that would collect that data. But it is a catastrophe. Tens of thousands, at least, of civilians, including tons of thousands of children, have been killed. Entire neighborhoods have been reduced to rubble, while hospitals, schools, and critical infrastructure have been systematically destroyed. Access to food, clean water, and medical care is being deliberately restricted, leaving millions in unthinkable conditions. This is not a distant conflict, it is a human rights emergency that demands our attention. As a city that I believe values justice, family, and ethical leadership, Pearland has both the opportunity and the responsibility to respond with clarity and conscience. First, we urge you to adopt a resolution that formally condemns the humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Cities across the country have taken this step not to weigh in, to weigh in on foreign policy, and to affirm their commitment to human dignity and international law. Pearland can and should join them. Second, we ask that you call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Although federal representatives lead on foreign affairs, local governments have an impact role in shaping national priorities by voicing the concerns of their constituents and reinforcing public demand for peace. Third, we encourage the council to support humanitarian aid efforts directed at Gaza's civilian population. This might include endorsing local fundraising campaigns, forming partnerships with reputable aid organizations, or facilitating community education and engagement around the issue. Even symbolic acts of solidarity can lead to tangible relief. Lastly, we call upon you to review the city's investment and procurement policies to ensure that public funds are not and will not be directed to corporations implicated in violations of international humanitarian law. Ethical governance means making choices that reflect our shared values, not only within city limits, but in how we engage with the world. None of these demands are extreme. They are rooted in compassion, principle, and the belief that even local governments can and must stand for what's right. Please let Pearland be remembered as a city that raised its voice when it mattered most. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Monica Cellular, Quilar? I'm sorry, I don't know how to say that, I apologize. Make your name, way to the podium, three minutes, and state your name for the record. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Monica, and I'm here in solidarity with the people of Gaza. For almost two years, we have been witnessing the United States commit genocide in Gaza, where half the population are children, through arming, funding, and protecting the settler state of Israel. This is funded in part by our own tax dollars. While families here in Pearland struggle with rising costs and underfunded schools, our tax dollars are being directed to fund the slaughter of over twenty thousand Palestinian children. Where every child, every child, whether it's in Pearland or Palestine, deserves safety, dignity, and a future. And so, I stand with Bay Area for Palestine to demand that this council, one, adopt a resolution condemning the genocide in Gaza. Two, call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Three, support relief efforts. And four, reevaluate the city's investment policies to ensure that funds go directly towards bettering the lives of the Pearland community, and not for war crimes in Palestine. Your silence is complicity. Your inaction as city leaders will become a permanent stain on this community. It is clear that the people of the world, not the politicians, stand strong with Palestine. The movement for Palestine will only continue to grow, and you will have to face the reality of your complicity in the genocide in Gaza. The people of Pearland are watching. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Renata Guy? Did I say that right? Okay. And I believe you're speaking on behalf of an organization, is that correct? Okay. Okay, so if you make your way to your podium, state your name and organization, and you will have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Renata Guy. I am a, I've been a part of the community here in the Pearland League City area for fifteen years, sixteen, Houston, Houstonian for my whole life. So, very familiar with Houston and the surrounding suburbs and whatnot. Anyway, so I'm here because I have felt a strong urge to come out and advocate for the people of Gaza, a very faraway land that nobody thinks about because it's so far away. However, the current events have, have, have moved me significantly to a point where I have come to learn about this little piece of land in the Middle East. I, I before, before this whole situation happened, the last couple, since the last couple of years, starting on October seventh, is what they say, I did not know about the ongoing apartheid, the ongoing humanitarian catastrophe ongoing over there, and the injustices that have been occurring over there. And so, since that event, and since I've come to learn of what has been happening, I have been deeply hurt with our government. I have been deeply disappointed, because I've always thought of the American government being the just, the right, the always-on-the-right-side-of-history country, but it is not the case right now. So, since I've been watching all these children being bombed, killed, pulled out in pieces from the rubble, it makes me wonder, what could we do as individuals to help this situation? I know this is a faraway land. This is a land that is not pertinent to us, to some degree, you'd think, but we are all connected. We are all part of this human experience that we are engaged in right now, even us in this room. And we have a responsibility to each other, to advocate for each other, to advocate for each other's well-being. And this is the reason why I'm here. I have a two-month-old at home, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old at home, and I have a husband. I have a job, I'm an attorney. I have a lot of things that I have to do, but I'm here because I feel moved to do so. I'm a mother, and I care. And because of this, I'm here with our groups, and I would also like to call for what we have formally written out, and we hope that you also feel moved to do something about this, to think about your part in this world. And thus, I do want to advocate and request that you guys adopt a resolution condemning the humanitarian crisis in Gaza, call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, support humanitarian aid and relief efforts, and promote ethical investments and procurement policies. These are important things. You think they might not matter, but everything matters in this world, and acting with intention means a lot to everyone, including yourselves and your life and your families. So, again, thank you for your time, and really do hope you guys do the right thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, that is all the speakers for the public comments.
Thank you for that, Ms. Renata. Thank you for your comments. We will move forward in the agenda, consent agenda. There are any items, I have received a request to remove item J. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Coza, if you would present consent agenda items A through O, with the exception of J.
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration possible action on consent agenda items A through O, with the exception of item J, so moved.
Again, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chaviria?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Byrom?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, Mr. Carbone, could you present item J, please?
Thank you, Mayor.
Real quick, I know Mr. Coza has a conflict with one, I know we're rejecting bids, but he has a conflict with one of the members that bid on it, so he needs to recuse himself.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution R. two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-eight, so moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Quick staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, this is a rejection of all bids for tree maintenance services. Bids came in very high and well over budget, so we're reviewing that scope to ensure it is appropriate for the amount budgeted and then plan to rebid. Thank you.
All right. And just for the record, I think Mr. Coza has a tenant in a building that he owns that bid on it, so he needed to, he needed to recuse himself, even though we're rejecting them. Just that way, we have it on the record that way. Any other questions, comments from council?
Mr. Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. And the budget amount was, what, four hundred thousand, and all the bids came in between one-three and one-seven? What, what was the, how did we miss this? So far off.
So, my understanding is that the scope and the volume of the work that was bid was much higher than we'd done in previous years, and, you know, that was just a mistake in how it was bid. This was prior to our current purchasing staff that's on board now, so they're now working with the department on that, and working on that scope so that it is appropriate for the amount of budget we have for this program.
Okay, and this was not like a unit supply?
We've got, Jose here with our purchasing office, he can answer that question.
Councilmember? Yes, that's correct. I think when, when it was developed, I think the intent was to do it in that manner. However, when we got the pricing, it was evident that it was too high, so it was something that we're going to evaluate to enhance the scope of work, so it's reflective of our needs and it's closer to our budgets.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chaviria?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Byrom?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you for that. And, yeah. All right, with that, we'll move to public hearing number one. Okay. Martin, are you presenting for staff?
Yes, Mayor. I was just walking through our happy new people who got their zone changed.
Gotcha, gotcha. If you'll present the reason for the public hearing, then move right into your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, for this first public hearing, this is a request by Dunaway applicant on behalf of Jenny Setagast Smith, Sandrea Setagast Abidi, Marion E. Smith, Marion E. Setagast III, Carlita S. Sealy, Marion Sullivan, Third Coast Resources One LTD, and Third Coast Resources Two LTD owners for approval of a zone change for twenty-three-point-six-zero acres and eleven-point-five-nine acres of land from the single-family residential two district to general business district. This land is generally located both north and south, north and south sides of Pearland Parkway, across from Shallow Creek Drive, and north of the center at Pearland Parkway here in Pearland. So, as mentioned, this is a zone change from the R-two district to general business. This would allow for a variety of uses. Of one of those uses, which is called out, is the development of a medical facility. We sent out written notice to everyone within two hundred feet. We did get eight notices, primarily from the subdivisions that are either north or south of the property, that were against or wanting more information. And as, as noted, notification signs were placed on the property by the applicant. So, taking a look at the property, you can see there's a little bit of vacant land, school, some residential areas, a trailhead, followed by Clear Creek and the center at Pearland Parkway. Taking a look at the future land use plan, the primary area is within the mixed-use center. The general business is in compliance with the mixed-use center. However, the general business is not in compliance with the property on the other side of Pearland Parkway, which is called out in the natural areas and outdoor tourism. As discussed, this is, that is the only inconsistency, is that property on the east side of Pearland Parkway. And then, while development will require some screening against the residential areas adjacent to the site, there is a pretty significant drainage area in creek that provide additional bufferings from the residential properties. With that said, the general business district is compatible with the adjacent commercial tracks. Out of all of that, staff recommended approval of the zone change from the R-two to general business, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval mirroring that recommendation. With that, Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
All right, thank you for that. Is Representative from Dunaway here for a presentation, or is the, there we go, good deal. Give us your name for the record, that'd be great, and go right into your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Andrew Allmond, thirteen oh four, Langham Creek, Suite Four Ten, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero eight four. We're here representing Dunaway. We have a presentation, very, very quick presentation, which I know will be appreciated. I'm here to speak to the land use itself, regardless of whether there's a clinic going there or not. I'm just looking at whether this is an appropriate area for the general business district. When we first met with staff, the consensus among our side, we're working with the Setagast family, this is the last of the major Setagast tracks along Pearland Parkway. I've been involved with all the other plan developments along the road up to this point. So, when we first came in, we said, hey, let's look at the G.C. district. And after some discussion with staff, after some internal discussion, we figured out that it wasn't appropriate for a bay zoning district there. So, we had some feedback from the neighborhood, and obviously GB, being a downzone district, fits in a lot better with what the clinic plans to do, and makes the uses that will develop adjacent to the clinic a lot more palatable for them. So, it's kind of like a double-edged sword in a good way. It's good for the development, because it satisfies their need, and it also protects their investment on the whole, almost thirty-plus acres, because it gives them, you know, the protection against the uses coming in after the fact. So, that, that's the main thing I wanted to mention, was that the downzone GB is a protection in and of itself, and we're not interested in getting a G.C. district. So, the BDD four facility, which you saw on the map, creates a natural buffer. When we did the Pearland Parkway development, we're again working with the Setagast family, we dedicated a lot of that land to BDD four. And so, it's a very nice, you know, natural separation between the neighborhood and us. And at the planning commission meeting, we did have a lot of discussions with the neighborhood, neighborhood and the people in attendance, and that seemed to allay a lot of their fears, just knowing that we did not have control of the BDD four facility, and that created a natural buffer between whatever goes on, this GB-zoned land and the neighborhood to the north. And then, as staff mentioned, it's in, it's in compliance with the Unified Development Code on our side. The only thing we want to do with the land across the street is rezone it to a similar district to what we plan on doing, to facilitate stormwater management. So, it's no vertical development. Obviously, that's, that's not going to be possible in the foreseeable future because of all the encumbrances with the land and the mechanical issues there, but we do need it to be zoned GB so that we can provide the detention facility that we'll need for the land across the street. So, that's why you do have those two tracks across from one another, and why it is imperative that they, they both be zoned GB. This is just a graphical representation, so you can kind of see it at an oblique angle, how wide, how big that BDD four facility is, and how much of a nice buffer it provides. Again, being involved with that retail development to the southwest, it's west here, but it's oriented a little differently, but to the southwest, it provides as much buffer as you could ever want. Obviously, there's no vehicular connectivity, that was one of the issues when we did center at Pearland Parkway, that we would not provide that connection, and it's existed in compliance, and it's been a very good neighbor to the neighborhood up until this point, and provided a lot of good stock. We think that if this does go GB, it will be another good neighbor in, in this facility, in this neighborhood, because we have GB to the north of us, and we also have an end cap of GB to the southwest, on the other side of Pearland Parkway, down to the south where the HEB development is. the HEB development is. That concludes my comments. If y'all have any questions, we have obviously myself, and then we have folks from the clinic user here to speak as well.
Very good. When we get to city council questions and comments, we, we may have you back up. But thank you for being here. We'll do those in just a minute. Let me get through the for and against and then we'll do, there were several people who signed up to speak. Andrew was one of those and we had two others. When we do the for and against, after we do that, before we get to city council, we'll make sure that, we'll go ahead and call them up now. Let's just do that. Go ahead and have the, I think, two others. Yeah, they can do it all.
All right. So Jim Johnson, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Not in three minutes. Welcome back.
Jim Johnson, 6117 Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas. Good afternoon or evening, council and mayor. So I'm here today to speak behalf of our support of the opportunity for Kelsey Sebold to expand in Pearland, Texas. Kelsey Sebold is one of our largest employers, if not the largest private employer, as well as a continued advocate for good business practices in our community. And council has the opportunity to look at a zone change and our organization looks at this as we are supportive of council working with Kelsey Sebold to find an appropriate change that allows them to move quickly and continue to expand in our community. Thank you for the opportunity, council, and have a great day.
Thank you, Jim. Next one was Andrew. I'm assuming you don't have anything to add at the moment, so you're good. And so we'll go on to Stuart Sayer?
Kaye.
Kaye. All right. I got it.
Yes. Good evening, councilmember. Stuart Kaye, Senior Director of Operations at Kelsey Sebold Clinic. Yeah, I'm excited to talk to you about this, this opportunity, the significant investment, yet another significant investment, I may add, in the Pearland community. Of course, we have our corporate office over on Shadow Creek Parkway and our multi-specialty group practice on the freeway. I'm excited about this for a number of reasons. Number one, I think for maybe five years, I've been talking about needing a footprint in the, on the eastern side of Pearland. I got tired of talking about it. In fact, I quit talking about it because we never could seem to move it down the field. We're finally moving this project down the field and so I'm excited for that reason. The main reason I'm excited about this, though, is that this really achieves a major enterprise goal for us. One of our goals at Kelsey Sebold Clinic is to be within 10 minutes of every current patient and every current, future patient of Kelsey Sebold. We have a, a big swath of land between our clinic on the west side of the, of the freeway and then towards Clear Lake and League City. This puts us right where we need to be. It opens up, you know, ourselves to, to, to other communities, not just eastern Pearland, but Friendswood, other parts of the county and other cities, to be honest with you, with, within Brazoria County, Galveston County and Harris County. So we're excited about this opportunity. We know that health, health outcomes improve when there's proximity to healthcare and lowers the overall health, cost of healthcare. And so we are very excited about this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all the comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good deal. So we'll open it up for the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name for the record and have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and three minutes to speak. Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll turn it open for questions, comments, concerns from city council with that. Ms. Havri?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just really quick, Martin, is this the property that was proposed, I guess apartment several months ago? Is this a tract of land?
It, it is the same tract of land that we had a workshop about. There was going to be an apartment in the back. The current request in front of you is just for general business for the entirety of the property. So there would be no residential component.
No, I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Mr. Bone?
Curious what the plan is, I guess, Andrew, for the 11 acres across the street. It's pretty much floodplain, so I'm just curious what you think.
Yes, sir.
The acreage across the street, what's the plan for that? I mean, it's wooded right now. I know it's floodplain.
Right. The, the plan for that is to do some under the highway stormwater, you know? So what we're going to do is we're hopefully going to develop a portion of that land into a, obviously a lower than grade stormwater detention pond and then pipe it under the, the Pearland Parkway. They need, because it's going to be a cohesive development, because it's going to be associated with our development on the other side, they need to have the, the same zoning. That's the only reason. Aside from that, I doubt that there'll be any material changes to the land because as a retail developer, that's just not possible. Mechanical issues with the land itself would not really allow for anything at this point to be developed but stormwater detention. I did move very far away. Yes, sir.
So staff, you know, HEB start at the quarter, corner, that was what a PD? And then the, the new developments have all been PDs or UDs, correct?
That is correct.
Excuse me. I think the hard corner HEB was not a PD. It was actually just straight zoning.
Okay.
Then everything after that has been part of a PD.
Okay.
It was originally a part of a PD and then it reverted back to the general, or the general...
General business.
The general business district that it is now.
Okay. I, what's the thought of going to a straight underlying base zone versus a PD? I know your thought.
Yes, sir. I know. You got it. Yeah. I wasn't going to say it. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thanks, Member Carbone. So I think the general business, I mean, especially knowing who it's Kelsey, great, great community partner, someone that staff fully supports and would be a tremendous asset on this parcel. From an overarching just development standpoint, you know, the consistency along Pearland Parkway there when it comes to the look and feel of those buildings, it would be great to extend that through the end cap of this parcel. However, this is in line with the future land use plan, knowing that it's Kelsey, staff wanted to be supportive of that. However, if there was a mechanism to work in the consistency with the landscaping and the materials that are on those out parcels, that would be great.
Yeah. And I guess, I don't know how many times I've heard we're zoning the dirt and Kelsey could flip this tomorrow. Not that they would. I'm fully supportive of Kelsey, but we're zoning dirt here. And so if, if you're asking me to vote yes on Kelsey, great. If it was anybody else, probably not. I'd be wanting a PD. So is there any, or we just take Stuart's word for it? And, I mean, you see what I'm saying?
No, yes, sir. And was following the UDC conversation and again, I've also heard the zoning the dirt echoed a few times over the past few months. Yes, sir. I mean, essentially, we, we know Kelsey's here and their request is GB and that's what's in front of us.
Okay. I mean, and part of the CUP, I know sometimes we tie the site plan, sometimes we don't. I mean, it's a big 30 acre site. We've, we've got a lot of comments anytime this comes up and that just causes me to pause just going straight underlying base zone.
And one item just to mention for everyone's edification is, so the offsite detention in GB would require a conditional use permit? And so that is a layer just to consider whenever they do come in to, to develop that as offsite detention, it would require a conditional use permit.
And it's considered offsite because it's across the road?
Is that...
Okay. So I have a, I have a quick question that, that may, may help some of this. Stuart, I don't want to get into the, the ins and outs of the business deal here, but I have, I've seen this happen before. What is your schedule for feasibility and then close on this property? The feasibility period and then closing of the property?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
What is your timing roughly on finishing up your feasibility and then moving to your close?
I'd have to, can I get you to help with that answer?
Right. So real quickly, there, there's two pieces to that. The, the feasibility period is, is almost over. We've had to extend or we're, we're right in the face of another extension. And I think you all have some pretty good experience with the Setagast. I've obviously worked with them quite a bit. We, again, we did all the Pearland Parkway stuff, even had a little bit to do with HEB back in the day, but, so the feasibility is an issue. We're up against a time crunch. That is part of the situation here. The other side of it is, and this came up when we were doing Pearland Parkway too, we thought about doing a straight GB zoning district. That's kind of where we were coming at from a real estate investor's perspective. It's vastly more, you know, positive to not have to go through the PD and have all those expenses, have all that, that, you know, the issues with that. But they, the retail center needed some of those GC uses. So to get that extra intensity, we agreed to do the PD. That's where the Pearland Parkway PD came in. This situation's a little bit different because the base zoning district, not only is it appropriate for the surrounding area, it's appropriate for the land. They don't need those extra obnoxious uses. And so as the owner, they're willing to take that down zoning on and you do have the corridor overlay as well. So in terms of aesthetics and how it looks from Pearland Parkway, you do have an extra layer of protection there. It's going to look just by the basis of the same as Pearland Parkway.
Yeah. So let me get to my, let me get to my question. The reason why I was asking the question, Stuart, is we have done this in the past and I'm going to ask legal to, to opine real quick. We have approved first reading and then second reading is pending closing of the property. That way, if you don't close with the property, it doesn't zone. So it's, it's tied to the, it's tied to the, the actual physical close. So then you have it, if something happens and it blows up and you don't close, we don't ever move any, anything forward on the GB. And we've done that in the past. That's something that we can do here. It ties it to Kelsey. And to your point, yes, they could turn around and sell the property, not saying that they're going to do that, but at least they would be in and it, because if you, first reading today, second reading in two weeks, their contract blows up, you've just rezoned this GB and, and you don't have anybody on it. So that, that could be a way to overcome or alleviate some of that. So that's the reason why I'm asking that question.
No, that, as long as legal's cool with that, that at least Kelsey's holding on to it.
Legal would not recommend postponing the second reason for a change of ownership. However, if you think that it is appropriate to do a second reading at a meeting after, I think it's scheduled for the next meeting, you can do that. If you're looking for other types of appropriate controls to make sure that you get development that is compatible with the adjacent properties, I think that the CUP for the detention might be that control that you're looking for.
Right.
Because that is discretionary. And if you don't grant the CUP for the detention across the street with that discretionary zoning, that means that they're going to have to put the detention somewhere else on the primary site. That primary site detention is most likely going to be at the back where the other things are so that it's further from those neighbors. So that would be the control that we would encourage you to use for the CUP where it is purely discretionary and nobody can later come and say, you weren't zoning the dirt, you were zoning the person.
Cozza?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that comment, Lawrence, what happens if we did do that and they said, no, we don't want a retention pond on the backside of the property? Now we've got somebody that owns a piece of property that's been zoned GB and what's the option?
They're still going to have to come up with the detention for the entire site on their property if you don't grant it. And if they don't want to put it in the back of the site...
But what I'm, but what I'm saying is if it gets to the point where they're like, okay, we don't want to develop it.
So it's just going to be GB unbuilt and continue to be fellow property?
And available.
Or it'll be under a different person's ownership name?
Available for sale. Zoned GB.
Yeah. But at some point in time, it's still going to have to come in for detention.
I understand that, but I'm just...
Yes, sir.
It's a little weak in my opinion on that. So that's just my opinion. But what I, what my question is, out of the acreage that you have here, how many acreages or how many acres are going to be or the clinic?
That, that could depend. First thing, there won't be an emergency room because that's not allowed in GBs. That's not part of the consideration here, but the size of the clinic itself could vary. Obviously depending on the mechanics of how the engineering plays out, where the, the pass-through is going to be across the street, it's going to be several acres for sure. But it, like, let's say as an example, you wanted to tailor it back and only do the clinic site to GB, which we really don't know where that's at, they probably wouldn't want to buy the property because they would not want something coming in behind them zoned GC around them. That's their biggest fear is that someone comes in around them and builds an apartment complex or someone comes in and puts a GC use around them. That, that's why it's just as valuable to them to have GB as it is for the city to have GB. Because when, they were privy to the same discussions that you guys were about the apartment complexes and they were a little bit mortified about that. So that was the main consideration when they downzoned is no apartments.
So out of the 30 acres, give or take, are they buying the whole 30 acres? Are they buying part? What's...
They're, they're buying the whole thing and they'll probably develop around five acres if I had to guess, maybe a little bit less than that. Again, depending on the market and how the buildings go in.
Right. But what, what I'm getting at is they will have control over the property. So...
Yes, sir.
They, as far as are they, or is Kelsey Sebold intending on selling it parcels? Or you're going to have a developer come in and develop the, if you're taking five acres, and I'm not holding you to, you know, five acres, but just for argument's sake, if you're going to hold five acres for the clinic, that gives you another 25, roughly speaking. What is the plan for that additional property for the future? Are you holding in to sell? Are you going to develop it? What's, what's the plan?
So the, the flexibility is the good thing right now. I, I would imagine that they'll sell it off in the future. But what they'll do before there is, is obviously put in covenants and restrictions to protect their, their use. So before they, they think about any extra parties, they're going to protect their investment in the land as well. And that includes everything going back to the BDD four facility. But they may keep the whole thing, do a medical business park, you know, that, that would be the long-term hold there. They may do their clinic and then put some, some extra parcels, you know, sell to a third party. So it's really up in the air right now. They really can't do that long-term planning because they don't even know if the zoning's possible. So that, that's where they're stuck right now and they're up against such a tight timeframe. Again, like, I don't want to get into this, like, really nitty gritty about the real estate side of things, but it's a very difficult group to negotiate with. We're very fortunate that we have the time that we do to get this done right now and that's about as...
Right. No, I'm just looking at what, you know, because once they do take ownership, what's the future view of what they want to do with it?
Those are very good questions. They will have ultimate control. Whether they sell it or not, it's going to have Kelsey's fingerprints all over everything. But that, that's the one thing that we always tell people. And that's why the eight citizens aren't here today, I would imagine. Because they had a really good feeling after the meeting that one, there weren't going to be apartments and two, that Kelsey Sebold would have control over the 20 acres and then they would restrict it further by private means as it was sold down the line.
Okay. Thank you.
Tell? Thank you, Mayor. I guess one of the questions I have, can you pull up what can be allowed in a GB? I know it was given to us. Can you pull it up on the screen? While he's pulling this up, is there height restrictions you guys would be willing to put on this site just for the sake of the residents behind them? If you guys were to sell it, because eventually you're, you're going to chop this up 30 acres and I guess, would you be willing to put height restrictions on the development on this?
I, I know that, that's going to kind of be a natural thing, especially for the out parcels up front, because if they go to the rear, obviously there'll be height restrictions there. They looked at the mechanical issues with the view shed in the back. And again, it's hard to, hard to appreciate right now, but that BDD four facility is pretty massive. And so you could build a three-story building on the setback cusp back there and there's no issues with visibility. We showed something to one of the property owners and they were like, oh yeah, well, I won't even go to the meeting then because that was their main concern. And we're not building like a five-story building. We, it's going to be a two or three. That's kind of where we're at right now. So that, that, that's kind of is mitigated by the BDD four facility and I'm sure there'll be restrictions that they'll put in there to protect their own issues as well. Height, aesthetics.
So they're going to build it behind in the back and sell the front parcels, I'm assuming?
Um, we, we don't know for sure yet. That's, that's kind of the thought right now, but it may change. It just, again, it just depends on what the master planning takes, on what zoning is approved, how that works on their end.
Okay. Can you pull up the other, okay, so can you pull up the drawing where it shows the opposite So can you pull up the drawing where it shows the opposite side where the detention pond is? So while back ago, Ms. Cade, you made a comment that there's not enough parking when you go walking on this trail. Are you familiar with this little parking? Is there any way you guys would consider if it's possible to add parking onto this and help us having more parking space here while you're developing this? Even if it's gravel, something where people can actually use our trails? Because right now, you guys would be butting right up to this park. Can we zoom in on that? I don't know if you can, and I don't know if the property line is there. I think it's like six, yeah, six-car parking right here.
Yeah, we would definitely love to work with the city to, to talk to them about whether that's possible or not. We've had some great discussions with them so far about, again, like how to use it, whether it can be stormwater or anything else. So I mean, I can't, I can't commit to that because I don't own the property.
I'm not trying, if, if possible, it would, it would kind of help this area because the city spent a lot of time and money. And it's six parking, it doesn't do anything for anybody.
And I could personally push for that and, and we could talk about it offline. We have one of the representatives here that, that has real estate control. So I'm sure he can give you some feedback, but we can, if you'd like to talk about it.
Mayor, Council, Adam Wilford. Yes.
I, I, I appreciate it, but thank you.
So since he, since he's agreeing to that, I do want to point out, we won't allow gravel parking.
Well, great. Sorry, you didn't ask the right question. So that's, that's on you.
Still yes.
And just though, Stuart, help us understand, I mean, look, I'm all in favor of what you guys are doing better than the apartments, so thank you for doing this. The number of jobs you guys would create and average pay down there, that's going to be happening down there. Because that's going to help the restaurants that are down there, right? And what's your future growth plan? Because I see what you guys did on 45 and Webster. You guys started out with one building and you constantly grew. And I'm hoping that's the case here. Eventually you will grow.
Well, that is definitely the, what we want to do. When you look at Bay Area and what happened there, we built a clinic, we expanded that clinic, we built an even bigger campus next door, and then we built a cancer center in front of that. When you look at where we started in Pearland, we had one small six-doctor shop many, many, many years ago. We, we, you know, ultimately built a second clinic. And then we built our, our current clinic where we sit now. And then we expanded that clinic. That clinic, I'm going to be honest with you, is full. You know, we have no room to grow, very little room to grow in the Pearland Clinic. So, you know, it, it's our, it's our goal to provide care to patients in this community and in communities adjacent to this community. And so we will continue to grow. When you look at our FTE footprint, if it's two stories, we will, we will, and it's going to be somewhere between two and three stories. Okay, so in two stories, we're going to have roughly 20 providers. In three, it's going to be roughly 41, almost, almost double, to be honest with you, because of the ancillary services that take up a lot of the first floor. And if you're looking at a three-story clinic, then you're going to be looking at roughly 150 people in all, physicians and RNs and LVNs and medical assistants and admin staff. I can't give you, I don't want to give you a, a wrong number on the average salary when you average all of those together, but I can get back with you on that.
And just one last question, Stuart. What do you think your build-out cost will be taxable?
I'm going to, 30 million? It'll be 22 to 32 million, somewhere around there.
Thank you so much.
I think that's pretty accurate.
Thank you, sir.
I think ultimately the conversation is, you know, is GB right for this corner? I think GB is right for this corner. I, I share Member Carbone's comments, but I think that there's also, there's also some value in history. And when you've been a good partner for the community, over and over and over again, there's some trust that comes along with this. So I would be, I'm fully in support of what you guys are doing. Thank you for what you brought to our community. Thank you for your quick and easy yes. Sorry, this hasn't been a quick and easy yes for you. But that would be fantastic for our trailhead there, having more ability for people to use those trails. That's where I'm at on it.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I just kind of want to echo, you know, when I looked at this and looked at the base zoning of, of general business, I, I just, I thought it was the right base of zoning. Even if we did a PD, the base would probably be general business and then we, we, we come in and do the others. Knowing Kelsey and knowing, you know, the, the partnership that we have there, you know, I think what PDs do is they give us that opportunity for getting what the developer needs and what the business owners need, but also the city getting what they need and facade requirements and those types of things. And we know, we know Kelsey has a, has a footprint. We know you have a kind of a template of what you build. And so, you know, my hope is, is in that, that we, we ultimately get that, you know, you know, with this. And so I think the other concern, and I've already, and I've already raised it, and that is, you know, for some reason y'all don't close on it and this is zoned, it's, it's now zoned, which is why I would, you know, would rather hold up on a second until we know for sure you're closing, then it's done and, and we're good. That way we know that, that, and because the zoning goes with the dirt. It doesn't go with Kelsey to another location. It doesn't go to the Setagus to another location. It stays right here forevermore, actually, until it's back in front of a, a zone change. So that, I think that's the consternation on, on some of that part of it. Staff, last comments, wrap-up?
Nothing from us, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else from council up and down?
Sorry, council, Mayor, I just want to understand, are we going to vote for the second reading within next time or what, what did we just say?
Let's discuss it. We get out of the public hearing, we'll go to the new business and we'll discuss it. With that, we will call a close to the public hearing and we'll move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance 2000 M-273, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now, the question would be if, Lawrence, if, if approved tonight, assuming that, if approved, it would be back on the 23rd? Is it 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the question would be, do we want it right back on the 23rd and move forward? Council may be okay with that. And, and that's council's discretion. I'm just thinking, if we pushed it to July for the second reading, then we would know. And if we pushed it to July, I think we would then know, they're, they're, through their feasibility, they would kind of know where they're, where they're headed. In fact, you have something to offer on that? Just for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Trip Perez, representing Dunaway, representing Kelsey Seville. Kind of give a, I'm going to, as, as true as me, I'm going to give a long answer. So. Like I said, I, I never guaranteed to get y'all home early. So get a little bit of history of what we're, of what Kelsey's attempting to do. Obviously, we want to serve the east side, Pearland, Friendswood. Kelsey is now owned by United Health. And with that, with the additional resources comes the opportunity for us to avoid some headaches we've had with previous developments. So the, the Bay Area clinics are a good example. We have developers who do not keep the commitments and we have to fight through promises made but not kept. And ultimately, with the additional resources, we've decided, we're just going to buy all of the land. And we're going to control our own development and we're not going to have a lot of back-and-forth negotiation with a developer who may or not be as resourceful as we need them to be, may or not be as honest or as truthful with the commitments that they made. So that's the reason why if we're going to purchase a piece of land, develop a seven-to-eight acre tract, we're going to go in and buy 30 acres. There, there is no intention of whether we're not going to build a clinic here and hold the land. The contention is whether the remaining land is developed with United as the developer or they're working in partnership with another developer. There's no intent to sell the remaining parcel. The intent is to protect our development, Kelsey, and make sure that all of the development around us is not noxious to the Kelsey development. I appreciate the concerns about PD. I think y'all have all kind of heard me say at one point, my opinion's a PD. It is a mechanism of last resort, only when no other zoning can cover what was being proposed. The reason I say that is Kelsey wants to own the land, but they don't want to own a piece of land that they can't do anything with. Say what, what you're asking potentially is us to take the risk that it would be voted yes, we take ownership, and then the second reading, it could be voted no. And now we own the land and we cannot offload it. Because even a straight zone would go. And most of the PDs that have approached, that have been approached on this land have been turned down. So it's, the position that Kelsey takes is that if we cannot get the zoning, we, we're not going to take ownership of the land. Because the PDs are expensive, they take a long time. We will spend, or track this size upwards of $200,000 developing a PD to essentially rezone it to something prescriptive to meet your needs while also having a very impatient ownership group that's going to continue to ask for more money in earnest, which would become very expensive for us, for us to eventually get a no. So we're respectfully asking that the GB, we believe, is appropriate. It was the same process with HEB where they asked for their portion to be pulled out of the existing PD so they could get a straight GB. And they were, they've been great partners. They've met most of their commitments. I would respectfully say, if there is an intent to have a higher class of development on this tract of land, council at any point can create another zone or change the restrictions in the GB to get what they're, what they're looking for without us having to negotiate back and forth with y'all. So we're trying to avoid the challenge of having a three-way negotiation with city staff, city council, and the ownership while paying for extensions on the contract and then still risking the no. So ultimately, our position is, we think GB is appropriate for the area. We're, we're buttressed on both sides with general business. It is the lowest-rated zone outside of neighborhood services, which is completely inappropriate for a tract of this size. So we're willing to take some risks and ha, not have more viable development that could potentially get, get greater returns if we sold the tract or developed the tract and had leases solely so we can have the protection. So our request is that if we would politely just consider the GB as appropriate for the use, we're not going to change, we're not going to take ownership of it and then flip it. We're going to take ownership of it, we're going to locate a, a Kelsey there, and then we're going to ensure that the development around us is appropriate for the community and appropriate for Kelsey.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments?
What, what is your closing schedule?
If we get the zone changed, we will close pretty soon. If we do not get the zone changed, we will not close.
Pretty soon, could be one month or it could be six months.
I mean, it's still, there's still some concerns on the negotiation, but it would, I think there's a couple of things on the due diligence we still have to clear out as we're finalizing the survey, but it would likely be within four weeks of the zone change.
So what happens if you get the zone changed and your deal falls apart? Some, you said there's still some things out there, right? So, I mean.
There's nothing that would, there was, you're, you're asking about timing, but not necessarily about any issue that would prevent the closing. There's no issues left in the negotiation that'll prevent the closing. It's an issue of timing.
I mean, look, if it was, again, I, I personally have known Stuart and we love Kelsey Seville in our community, but it's just that my little, I mean, Tony kind of, you know, said the fear is what if I give it to you and then something happens and it blows up? But that's a risk we have to take. Or you have to take the risk that you trust us that once you close that we will deliver GB, right? I mean, it's just, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I totally understand. Look, I understand, there's, there's no riskless proposition. We take the risk of taking ownership of property that's not zoned the way we want and then having a very expensive piece of land that we cannot offload. That's a significant risk for Kelsey. We're trusting that, that, that you will believe in us as much as we believe in you. This is, this is not a fly-by-night developer. We, we, we are already in the community. We already have two major facilities in the community. This would be the third major facility in the community. So we're not going anywhere. Obviously, they asked me to help because they know I'm not going anywhere. So we're, we're here to create a, a development that is going to be good for the community, good for that, good for that area. We're not going to be fly-by-night developers that come in, get a couple of checks and then leave the community and never hear from us again. We're, we're going to be here.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, I'm calling for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good deal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, moving to public hearing number two. Let's see, Michael, are you giving this one?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
All right, if you'll read for the record the reason and then move right into staff report.
This is public hea, this is the public hearing on a proposed Texas Department of Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program grant. And it is, to begin with, it, a little bit of background on it. It was part, part of the federal transportation bill signed in July 2012, which was known as the Moving for Progress in the 21st Century. Is intended to help fund community-based projects that expand non-motorized travel choices and enhance transportation experiences by move, improving cultural, historical and environmental aspects of transportation infrastructure. And primarily focused on expanding and enhancing pedestrian and bicycle transportation methods. In January of 2025, Texas Department of Transportation issued its recurring transportation alternative set aside call for projects. In March, the city submitted its initial application for this, which requested 80% financial support for approximately 35,000 square feet or 583 linear feet of new sidewalk and the replacement of 120,000 square feet of damaged sidewalk or 20,000 linear feet. Now, this is along FM 518 from Berry Rose Road to Pine Valley Drive. The project includes approximately 2188 compliant curb ramps at roadway intersections and the replacement of 68 driveways along the corridor. In April of 2025, the city was invited to participate in step two of the selection process, which involves the submission of a detailed application by June 20th. And the, like I said, the provide, the proposed sidewalk improvements start at Berry Rose Road and 5M18, FM 518's intersection and continue to the intersection of Pine Valley Drive and 518. Now, this is a map showing the length of road that's being considered for the sidewalk improvements. It's about three and a half miles. The total amount of funding requested is $5,005,000. We are still refining this, but as should be right around where, what we're asking for. The cost share is going to be 20%, so the state share will be 4,000, $4,004,000 with a local share of 1,100,000. Local share can potentially be covered by another grant that we will, we'll be looking to see if we can do that or bonds. Our next step will be on Ju, today, we're asking for council support for this application. On June 20th, we have to submit the detailed application. In August, they will review the, they will finish the review of the applications and make their award in October of 2025. With that, I'll turn the balance over to council.
All right, thank you for that. We'll open it up for the public. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on this particular public hearing, if you go to the podium, give us your name. And you have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing from the public to offer testimony on this. Third and final time, those wishing to offer testimony, go to the podium, give us your name and three minutes to speak. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will turn it over to questions and comments from city council. Chavira?
Thank you, Mayor. So we already submitted the PA, is that correct?
Yes, we submitted that back in March.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Fernandez?
Just to clarify, you said that we're going to try to obtain another source to fill in the gap of that 1 million?
That would be our goal, is to find another grant if we can, rather than having it come from general, general funds. If we can't, then we'll have to look at that and we'll be able to analyze that, of course, before we fully accept the grant at the end of the process.
Just, just real quick, is our bond money from the 23 bond election eligible as the gap? I mean, we are leveraging a million to, to an additional 4 million.
Yeah, I would say that's potential there based on it being for sidewalk gap and replacement. And then the other opportunity or other option under our financial policies would be certificates of obligation as matching funds. But that would be, you know, something we could, by council, make that choice.
But it seems like if we traded a million for 4 million, that's, that's a, that's
Seems like if we traded a million for $4 million, that's a win. That's a pretty good day. Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll close this public hearing, move to new business item number two. Ms. Chavarria, would you present it, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2025-71, so moved.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second. We've had opportunity for questions and comments from council as well as staff update. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Stepped off.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll do public hearing number three. I believe, Michael, you're presenting it as well. Same drill.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first public hearing for the CDVG program's 19th Annual Action Plan, and this is for the Community Development Block Grant. And this year, we are receiving $537,831 from this program. The Community Development Block Grant Program, a little background on it, it comes through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development via the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Cities of a population of over 50,000 or counties with a population over 200,000 receive this grant. The city of Pearland exceeded this in 2006. It's a fairly flexible program with spending at the discretion of the entitlement city with, so long as we stay within HUD regulations and the federal uniform guidance, falling under 24 CFR 570 and 24 CFR 200. There are also 24 different spending categories, including housing, social services, redevelopment activities, and infrastructure improvements. The program's purpose is to meet HUD's national objectives for anti-poverty strategies. This includes removing slum and blight, meeting local urgent needs resulting from things like natural disasters, national emergencies, and catastrophic events. It also is to serve low-to-moderate income households and individuals that are at or below an 80% MSA income level or areas that are 51% or more low to moderate income. Pearland is an exception entitlement jurisdiction for this. They have to stay below 42.5%. HUD determines how to allocate this funding based upon a formula. The city of Pearland falls under Formula A, where the population weighted 25%, poverty weighted 50%, and overcrowded housing weighted 25%. Formula B is primarily used for communities with large stocks of older housing, and the city of Pearland would not benefit as much from that formula. When determining the action plan for this year, we will be analyzing several things, including an assessment of existing local housing and the economy, and analysis of local conditions such as public infrastructure and neighborhood services, community and public facilities, social and public services, housing and economic development, homelessness, and nonprofit organizational development. We also will look at any unmet needs or medium to high priorities in the community that need to be met. This is the current income limits for an individual to qualify for the program. So under this, for example, a family of four would have to make under $92,900 to qualify. We can also look at areas of the city that may benefit from a CDVG project, and this was last year's, the map at the end of last year. We will be updating this as part of this action plan. The blue areas were areas that we could potentially look at doing projects in, so long as they fall within the city limits. As I said, this is the 19th Annual Action Plan, and it falls within the Fourth Consolidated Plan. The consolidated plan are five-year plans that help to guide the annual action plans. And next year, we will have to submit a new consolidated plan, and work on that will begin shortly. Some key dates, starting tomorrow until July 10th will be the public comment period. On July 27th, we will have a second public hearing as part of that regular meeting. We will ask for council adoption of the action plan on August 11th and intend on submitting on or before August 16th. And thank you, and I'll turn the balance back over to council.
All right, thank you, Michael. Same drill, we'll go to the public. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on this public hearing can go to the podium, give us your name. You have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to offer testimony on this CDVG public hearing. Third and final time, those wishing to offer testimony can go to the podium, give us your name, and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will turn it over to council for questions, comments, concerns. Anyone on council have a comment? Generally speaking, Michael, when does the plan then come back to us for implementation?
Usually, I believe around November is when they will initially come back with that. I know this year, they had a lot of back and forth with them that took us longer than usual to get it finalized back, but usually I'd say around November.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Michael, I heard you say you could use that funding for homelessness, is that correct?
That is possible, but typically Pearland does not have enough of a homeless population to make that applicable, but it is an option.
So what population has to be homeless in order to use those funds?
Joel, geez. I'm going to kick that over to Joel, sorry.
So, good question. I know there's some dialogue about some current situations in the community that are of concern, and I don't want to ever use the term statistically insignificant because that doesn't apply, and I appreciate your concern about that. Statistically, Pearland, in our five-year plan and in our annual action plan, we'll do an analysis based on the information we have. Some of that comes from what's called a point-in-time count. That is a HUD-sponsored initiative to gather that data from the community. That's open now, so we've actually taken some of the concerns about existing conditions and reported that in that system. But we also kind of have to take Harris County, Brazoria County, Fort Bend, and do a little bit of statistical, you know, quick math to determine that, and we've come up with about a five or six count of homeless for Pearland, which is small. And I think what Mike was trying to express is it's probably difficult to develop a program that would serve that small population well, but I think we're looking at options that involve referrals, maybe some transportation, and at least identification of those situations and offer the kind of help that we already probably have some existing resources to provide that don't necessarily require funding. We have reached that $500,000 threshold, which is important because HUD would allow us to engage in housing activities. So if we, you know, had the kind of money that Houston has or some large city, we could allocate funds towards homeless, rapid rehousing and things like that, but we just don't have those kinds of funds. But we can definitely look this year because I think we've got a little bit of play in our funding opportunity to see if there's something to do to help those folks, you know, quickly reestablish themselves in a more vibrant community that's got some of the resources that are necessary to get them off the street.
Thank you, Joel. And I'll tell you, this has been, I know, my ear has been kind of, you know, voiced to me, I guess. It is a problem, right? I know you want to, it doesn't matter what side of town we were in. I know we have people living in their homes or in their cars at Home Depot, is that right? And then on the west side, we literally have people sleeping on the sidewalk in a retail center. And matter of fact, I'm sorry, Jim Johnson left because he actually did a quick survey, and he said he went to Kroger and Buc-E's, and they all complained that it's an issue on that west side of town. And, you know, part of the problem is, and again, I don't know how we can use this fund, it is coming from the north. They're being brought to the hospital at HCA and Memorial, and then they don't have a place to go, and how do we get them home, right? People just don't. I mean, I heard a story, and I think Trent had the opportunity to speak to the doctor who owns a veterinarian clinic, who said they had somebody in their hospital gown in the parking lot in a wheelchair at Kroger. And so it's kind of disturbing in the sense that this is a, you know, people going to Kroger with their kids, and we have this issue going on. So I think it would be a great opportunity if you guys can figure out how we can use this money to better assist these people, and, yeah, I mean, I think it is a problem, and I don't want it to kind of masturbate, esterbrate it, and then kind of figure it out later, oh, we could have done something with this money and no one talked about it. So, yeah.
I think one step for us is to learn more, so we'll start to take a deeper dive into that area. I think it's a great question. Mr. Patel, thank you for bringing it up. It's a great question, and I think it is, it's great. It's the first time we've gone over the $500,000 mark, I believe, in the CDVG funding. It's up, what was this last year, $465-ish, something like that? So, you know, up considerable from that, so that's a good thing. Some of our organizations, you know, in town that are our partners, you know, will benefit from that, but like I said, we may be able to put some small programming together on how we can get people home, how we can get resources back where they actually live, not out here, where they got dropped off, you know? And so I think it'll be good. Last time, opportunity, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll close this documented public hearing. We'll move down to new business item number three. Mayor Proton Byrom, would you please present new business number three, please?
Mr. Mayor, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2025-82, so moved.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item approves a one-year contract to provide electrical, mechanical, and SCADA services for maintenance and repairs at all of our water plants, wastewater plants, and lift stations. The previously awarded contract from this past year, we actually terminated for convenience, and so we're utilizing a cooperative purchasing arrangement to get us through this next year with a plan to rebuild, rebid these critical services. So with this item, we recommend award to Vector Controls in the estimated amount of $1.15 million.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from city council?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, Vector Controls is a Pearland company, correct, on Beltway?
Yes, sir, they have a location with Endershauser on the Beltway at Kirby.
I just, I don't know if you guys knew that, but that's important that we're keeping these dollars within our community, so that's a great job.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Carbone? Yep, thank you, Mayor. In the packet, I had a question earlier on the Conflict of Interest questionnaire, and Trent ran it to ground, but I don't know if you could explain that a little bit for both this item and the next item?
Sure, so the vendor filled out a Conflict of Interest questionnaire, notating that an employee with City Pearland had a relative working for Vector, ran that down. It's actually that there's no one there related to anyone working there now. It was a prior situation where a relative of an employee had gone to work for Endershauser, which is kind of a partner-type company with Vectors, is my understanding, and they no longer work there as of January of this year. So the disclosures, you know, just indicated that they had worked there within the past 12 months. So we did run that down, and that had been vetted, actually, when that person went to work for the company through our legal department, that there was no issues with that.
All right, thank you. Any other issue? I'm glad it's a local company, love to keep the tax dollars here. Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Seeing no one moving in that direction, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, Ms. Cade, would you take up number four, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2025-84, so moved.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. As we've stood up the asset reliability team in Pearland Water this fiscal year, the team has been evaluating the condition of all of our utilities assets, and an immediate need that's been identified is to rehabilitate the bar screens at our wastewater treatment plants. Bar screens are the initial filtration mechanism that removes large debris from the influence stream and is a key component to meeting our permit requirements for affluent quality. So we went through the process of utilizing cooperative purchasing arrangement to get multiple proposals from three different companies for the needed work, and through that evaluation process, we're recommending proceeding with the lowest-cost proposer with Vector Controls in the amount of $2,128,470. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, sounds good. Any questions, comments, concerns? Very good, seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to number five. Mr. Fernandez, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2025-88, so moved.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to thank everybody that represented the city and the Pearland Police Officers Association through this meet-and-confer process. It was a very professional, collegial, and ultimately a productive process. The PPOA was represented by Officers Voe, McReynolds, and Basie, and then the city's representatives were Chad Randall, Katie Leninger, and Pat Savage and Ron Frazier. So just to walk the council and public a little bit through this process, last December, council approved a resolution recognizing the Pearland Police Officers Association as the bargaining agent for the meet-and-confer process. Subsequently, the association requested engaging in the process in January of this year. This was followed by four publicly-held meet-and-confer meetings to set the ground rules and negotiate the agreement. The association approved the agreement on May 30th of this year, and tonight, the final approval of the agreement is before the city council. The meet-and-confer process allows the city and the association to negotiate modifications to the civil service rules that we currently operate within, as well as pay and benefits. This agreement is a two-year agreement that establishes the following: additional flexibility in recruiting, modifications to the probationary periods and demotions, more discretion for the chief and promotions, and then restoration of vacation that was removed from our benefits package in 2006 at the 20-year mark, so that's just now starting to impact employees. And then it defines pay increases for both fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. So in summary, the agreement provides flexibility and discretion on upcoming promotions that will shape our leadership and command staff for many years while raising our pay plan to be much more competitive in the market for the most sought-after new recruits. In conclusion, we recommend approval of the meet-and-confer agreement with the PPOA and are happy to entertain any questions about the agreement or anything else. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Trent. We'll throw it open for questions, comments, concerns from council.
Okay, first of all, I want to let you all know that I sincerely appreciate everything that the police department does for us in providing us a safe community. So my question that I have is, why are we using Pasadena and Baytown as salary comparisons when they are demographically different from the city of Pearland? Crime, population, tax-based, I just would like to have a better understanding.
So the recommendation actually came through the police department's command staff. So we recruit police officers for cadet positions, for police officer positions from all over the Houston area. In doing that, we conduct a thorough background investigation, and part of that involves the applicants disclosing to us what other police agencies that they have applied for. And the agencies that were selected for comparison for salaries were based on other agencies that applicants currently applied for. So these are the agencies that we have direct competition with in recruiting new police officers.
So do we have data that we've actually lost that candidate due to, you know, Pasadena or Baytown? I mean, is there actual data to back up that theory?
I would have to ask Sergeant Carroll with the police department, but I believe that we track that in some regard. We have lost, you know, I personally did background investigations for 20 years, and, you know, we've lost a lot of applicants to Pasadena specifically because of the professionalism of their training program. You know, I don't recall us ever hiring somebody who left Baytown Police Department, you know, save one, and that was 20 years ago. So, you know, we do have candidates that we do lose to these. You know, a lot of times, there's a race, and the applicants will go to work for the first person who gives them a solid offer.
I think to add to that, one of the concerns when we sit in the lower rungs of our comparison cities is that we may not even attract those applicants to apply here. We want the cream of the crop, we want the best candidates, whether they're certified officers or going to go to the academy, and when we sit where we do now in our pay plan, I'm certain that we don't even attract some of those to apply here. So I think that's the other, you know, looking at the region, who we compete with, and then making sure we are competitive and we are, while not at the top of the list, attractive to the cream of the crop applying for these type of positions.
Okay, thank you. And again, I am very supportive... And again, I am very supportive of increases for the police department. I come from a family of police officers and firefighters, so thank you.
Questions, comments? Mr. Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. And assuming this passes tonight, what's the effective date, I guess, specifically around? I think there's some upcoming exams next week.
Sure. So, Ms., I believe as soon as this passes, it's, it's effective, the agreement's effective as far as the modifications in civil service, and then the pay plan changes become effective at the beginning of fiscal year '26, and have certain dates within '26, and then again in '27 where, where that becomes, comes to full fruition.
All right. And I'd just like to thank city staff and PPOA. This will be the first year since I've been on council that we don't have to have these quasi-PPOA council discussions, and it's nice going into it to get something that's fair, that's well-negotiated in a public meeting, and now we can budget for it for the next two years. So I'm glad, I'm glad the process worked. I don't think either side's thrilled, so that tells me it's probably the right deal. So anyway, thanks to everybody.
In two years, what happens? Is it still another round of this?
So I think, you know, with it, within probably the last, somewhere in that last, starting in that last year, maybe six months before the end of the year, we'll see the appropriate time, probably before we get into the budget process, about the same time we did it this year. You know, if, if the PPOA wants to look at extending that or negotiating a, a future one, that would be the next steps in that process.
Thank you. Thank, thanks to the PPOA also, and to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Trent, just for our knowledge, could you please follow up on how many officers we've lost to Pasadena and Baytown, and shoot an email back to us?
So, so I guess you're looking at applicants that applied here that we lost to there?
Yeah, I mean, we, I can see what statistics we have, I just don't know that that's a statistic that we have enough details on to say this is the number.
I mean, we can share what we, what we can gather.
Ron, Ron stated that, I don't know.
If you're asking how many, how many people that we've hired that we've lost to those agencies, the answer?
Well, what I'm looking at is, you say that you got the information from, to put the comparables together.
From applications, yes.
You said you got it from applications. So what I'm curious to know is, how many officers that have applied to Pearland have we lost to Baytown or Pasadena? That said, I'm looking at Baytown or Pasadena.
Do we know where they go, or we just know they don't come here?
We just know that they don't come here a lot of times, but, you know, every now and then we find that we lose one to League City or, or to Pasadena. We've had one officer who left here and went to work for Pasadena probably 25 years ago, and then another officer that we hired from Baytown that retired from us two years ago. So there hasn't been a whole lot of exchange, but we'll have to go through individual applications and, and find out, you know, where.
What I'm looking, what I'm looking at is, if they're going to be used as a comparable, in, in my opinion, when we compare Pasadena, similar to Member Chavaria, when we compare Pasadena and Baytown, their tax base is completely different.
Similar, similar with Webster.
I, I understand, but I, but I'm talking Pasadena and, and Baytown right here. So their tax base, one, is completely different. Two, both locations have volunteer fire departments. Because of the refineries that they have, they have professional firefighters within the refineries, that they're required as a goodwill, if you want to say that, to be volunteer firemen on their, their off time, to be able to help that city and be able to...
Baytown does have a paid fire department.
Okay, well, then if I'm missing that, Pasadena does not. And so with that, they don't have a cost of an additional public servant. So they have the ability, when they are trying to, to recruit people, offer more, because their costs are less in that regard. Now, if you go on and do a simple search online and say, "What's good about Pearland", you'll find out real quick that it pops up in the top five places to live. Second, you'll also find out, a recent article said affordability with the, the place to live, we're in the top, I think it's 20, 25, something like that, and the last article that came out went it through affordability into it. And when you turn around and say, "Okay, how does Pasadena, how does Baytown?", they come in the bottom 10. So when, when you compare our city to their city, we're comparing oranges and apples on all levels.
We'll see if we can't get a, a few years of data compiled showing how many officers have applied at, at both locations.
Yeah, that's all, I, I'm just, I'm just curious to see what that number is, because if, if we're using faulty data going into it, I, I'm curious to know. And that, that's all.
Understood.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I am extremely happy to support this agreement. With the current landscaping on how hard it is to find people that want to enter a career in law enforcement all around the United States, I think it's important to, you know, for these conversations to take place. I'm happy to see the city of Pearland continue to take steps towards taking care of our law enforcement officers. It is, you know, to find quality applicants, that's already extremely hard to find, but it's, it's one thing to find them, and then it's another thing to also retain them. So, you know, I'm just very, very glad to see the efforts made between the PPOA as well as the city staff, and I just wanted to, you know, to give those kudos to both organizations. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Trent, I know we're talking about the meet and confer here, but can we expect these to be coming from other departments as well now, from the fire or any public works, or, is this something that's going to be the new norm?
I, I mean, there's the potential for that. I don't, you know, I, I don't know whether any other associations would pursue that. The only other association we have is, is the fire, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'll just, I think maybe close out the conversation with saying, we often hear when government doesn't work, and I think this is a great example of when it does. Our community came together, discussed what we, what we wanted, our, our council heard from the PPOA, talked with staff, and, and gave some direction. Staff listened, everybody came to the table, and I think we've got a great deal here that that's going to be a long-term benefit for our community. So I appreciate all you guys, effort y'all put in, the 21 hours worth of public meetings, talking through all of this stuff, and the fact that it was, it was a respectful, professional, let's all work together for the betterment of our community and the betterment of those that serve our community. I'm very grateful for that, for y'all listening, so I appreciate it.
I'll just kind of round it out. I want to thank the PPOA members that, that represented your officers and agencies, and the, the candor, the professionalism, the ability to, and availability to be here during the meet and confer process, same thing with our own staff, and, and the heartfelt work that went into it. You can tell, and I can certainly tell on the second floor when they would come up and, and into the conference room, you know, this, there was a lot of forethought, a lot of thinking going back and forth, what was the right thing for our community, what's the right thing for our taxpayer, what's the right thing for, for, for fighting crime and making sure that our, our community is safe? All of those elements, same thing, making sure that we have the right things in there to retain, attract, and have the best officers that we can, you know, in the particular, in this particular area. And I want to echo what, what Member Fernandez said, that, that right now, we live in a, in a moment in time where, you know, being a police officer, I think, is, is one of the most noble professions that's out there. That's my thoughts. But if you go out to the news media and you go out to wherever, and that's not the case, and there is an all-out verbal and, and otherwise assault on anyone who wants to be a police officer in this country. I do come from a family, my, my wife's family are all police officers, so it's, it's personal when you, when you see that. It, it, it becomes very personal very quick, and, and so we have to have the right tools to get there. So I want to thank everyone involved, or, for the work that they put into it. I agree with Mr. Carbone, you know, when, when everybody kind of walks away with, huh, I don't know that I like that, but I don't know that I didn't like it, you know, and, and just, so it's probably the right deal. It's the first one, there's always, there, there will only be one first. Everything from then on is, is, is beyond that. And so there's a lot of good things that, that happened in this agreement. I, I want to thank, again, the PPOA officers, as well as all the way down, rank and, rank and file, all the way down that voted on this, that stood up, asked questions, that know everything about it. I, I think you see from the comments up here, I've said it, I've said it publicly, I'll say it again tomorrow, and I'll say it again next week, this dais, this council, this staff, the CMO, believe in our officers, they believe in, in what you guys do, we support you, our community supports you. We just want to make sure that we can get you the best tools possible with the budget and the budget constraints and everything that we do. And with that, you guys work magic. You guys do a great job, and you're dedicated to your craft, you're dedicated to each other, most importantly, you're dedicated to this community, and, and we owe you gratitude for that. So with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Byram?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. With that, we'll move forward. Other business, there were none listed here. Mayor Council issues for city council discussion, there were no issues listed here. With that, we will move to executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters regarding city boards and commission appointments. We'll stand in recess at 8:11.
Our city council has returned from executive session at 8:28 PM. With that, we'll move, there is no action item to take coming out, so we will adjourn at 8:28.